Stephanie, do you want to go ahead and turn it on? Good evening. It's Tuesday, the 6th of May, and it's 5:30. It's time for our work session. This is going to take an hour or so. And so, we're ready to get started. All of the council is here. And we are good to go. So, I would like to ask if anyone would like to lead us in a pledge of allegiance? Anyone? Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd also like to ask if anyone would like to offer an invocation or give to us an inspirational thought? Anyone from the council or from the the audience?
I can do that, Mayor.
Okay, thank you.
Our Father in Heaven, we're thankful for this beautiful day. We're so thankful for the moisture that has fallen and pray that it will continue in usable amounts. We're so thankful for this opportunity we have to serve Santaquin City. Grateful for the good citizens that live here. We appreciate them and their service. We pray that that will be with us tonight as we discuss matters of the city. We can be inspired to know what to do and say to benefit all of Santaquin City. These things we pray for at this time in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Thank you Lynn, and thank you, I don't know your name.
Brent Carter.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. We'll get going. We want to start with Travis. Would you like to do this presentation?
I would love nothing more. Do you want me to do it from down there or up here?
Up here to them.
Okay. So Mayor and fellow council members, this is an honor for me tonight to be here to present some scholarship awards to our
microphone on.
There you go. Thank you.
Yes.
I could hear you.
You just can't trust an idiot to do a man's job, so. It's an honor to be here to present some scholarship awards to our youth city council. And I just want to say that since I've been on city council and I've been assigned to work with the youth council, it has been a very rewarding project. And I'm going to use the word project because it's ongoing and it never ends. The thing that I love about the youth city council is that despite the name Youth City Council, we're more of a service organization than anything else. We show up to different city events, provide service, try to help recreation, the library, and anybody else we can to help things run smoothly. They also, these are like-minded individuals who volunteer to show up and they choose to do this, and that's what's great about it. So each year, part of our budget goes towards scholarships. And we have some very active members that take an active part. Chelsea and I, wave to the audience Chelsea. She's helped us immensely and we switched up the process a little bit this year where we had an essay and application and we did interviews. We're very impressed with the candidates. And we made some decisions. So I'm going to just start with our first place scholarship. So some of the things that our council members have to do in order to be eligible for this scholarship is they have to have seventy-five percent attendance and they have to do thirty hours of service each year. And this year, our Mayor Sabrina Collins has been very active member. She has far exceeded those numbers. And she's an impressive individual. I believe she's already been accepted to BYU. So, and she's our first place winner for the first place scholarship. You can stay seated while I finish this. Our second place scholarship goes to Dylan Thiel. He just barely got here on time. Dylan is our, he's one of our star lacrosse players, right Dylan? They had a narrow win in the rain last night because our lacrosse team doesn't quit. Have you been accepted to college yet?
Uh, yes. Uh, Utah State.
Congratulations. Okay, and our third place winner is Sadie Carter. So congratulations to our recipient. Oh, yeah, sure. The amounts, the first place, we actually were able, because of our generous budget from the city council, we're able to increase the amounts of our scholarships this year. So Sabrina in first place is going to be rewarded with seven hundred dollars. Dylan, four hundred dollars, and Sadie, three hundred dollars. And I wanted to get a big check, but I just got the regular sized ones. So I know the mayor's going to want you to come up so we can all take a picture. So come on up.
Jason, do you want to take that?
That's awesome. Are you going to take a picture? She's home alright?
You can come up and take him up close if you want.
Yeah, yeah, come up.
You want to get a good one.
Yep, absolutely. Front and center.
The further toward the outside I'll get better.
One, two, three. One, two, three.
Alright, ready? One, two, three.
You don't want shaking hands. Good.
Oh. Well, let's jump right in. And most of our business is going to be covering the upcoming agenda items for tonight. So we'll want to go through them. Any detail, any questions, anything we want to go into, let's make sure that we cover it. Okay? Do you want to jump right into it?
Where do you want me to start, Mayor? Do you want to start at the top? You want to you got one council member nodding head yes.
Well, if we need to talk about the budget.
Okay.
Or, I mean, about the bills, city expenditures? I don't think so. Everybody's had a chance to review those. Unless anything is sticking out and
It's just a big number.
The, yeah, it is. But we're also getting to the end of the year.
Yeah, I know.
And then, the volunteers will go over all of that when we get to that point.
Yep.
So I would say go to five and let's just go from there.
Okay, so we have the Utah Recreation Parks Association award presentation for the event of the year for the Little Buckaroo Rodeo. We'll have them here presenting that. And we'll have members of our rodeo committee here. John will be here as well to go over that with us.
You know, I do want to bring up what was asked of us.
Sure.
And the rodeo group did come to us and say we would like to get a little money to help with a little bit more in excess of what we had. So even as we go forward, tonight when we get to that point, that question may come up. I would just like to say, hey, we're going to look at this and see what we can do, you know, to help get over this bump.
So I will also indicate to the council and the mayor that right now, the tentative budget as presented does not have that request in there, but we'll certainly refine things as we go between now and the final budget over the next six weeks or so.
Yeah, we just found out in the last few days. And so, we just didn't want to throw this in and try to justify anything, and it's not a big ask. So, it's
This is, this is just, what is this exactly? I'm sorry.
It's for the rodeo, for the contestants, for something else too.
How much is it?
The brother in the back.
Can we give a quick update on that?
If you would like. Yeah, let's just take a second. We're going to hit a lot of other things, so just a minute.
Really quickly, so with the operations budget, we're actually increasing the rodeo budget nine thousand dollars this year. That includes a twelve hundred dollar increase for the roping club. So that's currently in the budget. What's come since then is a request to have four thousand dollars added to basically the winners' money. That we give a check basically to Circle J Rodeo and then they pay stock and the winners. And so that's what the new request is, is four thousand. So just wanted to let you know.
Yeah. Okay. So, yeah, we can just move on.
Okay. We will have a public hearing on the Mulberry annexation. They have, Mayor, they've sent a presentation. If you'll have us, then we'll present that and then have the public hearing and then the very next item would be an action item on that item. The packet includes two sheets that shows about four hundred and two total units is what's currently being proposed. I would indicate on that one, if you pay attention to Jason's memo, this likely would not get approved tonight because there's still a development agreement. If it meets your needs and something that you're willing to consider, then you can direct staff to table and we would go to work on a development agreement, or the option is to deny it as well. That's up to you as a council on what you decide to do there. But would recommend that we not look at approving anything tonight because it's not ready for that. This is really just their concept plan that would be a part of a future development if it's acceptable to you or not.
Jason, could you just search while we're going through this meeting and find the date of that meeting that they came in? And about the time in that meeting that I spoke to the end of it. And, you know, if that needs to be brought up and left, I would like to do that at this time and not go into it any deeper than that.
Okay. Do you want him to print that out? What do you, what do you, because that's going to be in a video format?
It will be.
You want to play the video? Is that what you're asking?
No.
Okay.
If they're interested, they can go to the date and time and play the video on your own.
That was in an email that you sent to the council, I think, a couple of weeks ago, a month ago or so. And then we'll have number eight is a discussion on possible action on the cemetery annexation petition. This is the cemetery, the fifteen acres that we bought, fifteen point three nine acres that we bought out to the west of the Olsen's Greenhouse property on Fifth South. And this is just a formality for us to go ahead and accept the petition. We are our own applicants and we also accept the petition, but that's up to you guys to do that. So that's just bringing that, potentially bringing that into the city. Again, this is just the acceptance of the petition. And we'll go on with the, any noticing or waiting periods, et cetera, from there. Stephanie, can you turn my mic down just a little bit? You know how to do that? Thank you. For some reason, I'm getting really loud here. Item number nine will be a public hearing on the budget amendment number five. Budget amendment number five will be item number ten for resolution. This budget amendment is strictly for the two buildings that we have ordered and getting us up to speed on that, on items that we've talked about over the last couple of weeks and couple of months as we're getting ready to order those buildings. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have on that. There are sufficient funds in the impact fee for parks to cover those costs.
Now, that's for the kit, but not the concrete floor or the foundations?
So it is concrete floor and foundation for the rec building, but not for the cemetery building over here on the smaller of the two buildings. That's correct.
I just wanted to make sure everybody knew that's kind of where we were going. We didn't want to spend that extra money on the cemetery building.
Right. In fact, we have funds in the tentative budget to start working and doing some of those improvements on the cemetery building next fiscal year. Any questions or concerns?
So you're saying that's not the cemetery building, that's just the activity?
It is the, it is the building, just not the floor and the foundation. In other words
I remember, I think we talked about it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So it's just the building on the cemetery building and it's the building plus the floor, windows, doors. There are some windows and doors on the cemetery as well, but not the floor and the foundation in the cemetery building?
I had a question about that and I haven't reviewed the plans, but isn't there some conduit that's going to need to be run through the floor just for electrical purposes and other things?
Electrical and plumbing will be done along with that. That's not budgeted currently right now, but it will be done in preparation for the floor so that we're we're making those preparations and not tying ourselves into a box and having to cut the floor up later.
Exactly.
Absolutely. Yep.
Good. Thank you.
Yep. Any other questions on that? Resolution oh five oh two, number eleven is for an ivory development agreement to change the layout on Tanner Flats. A couple of things to note there is they're getting three less lots. They had to change the park location because of storm drain needs, and so now the park will be essentially a park within a detention basin which we have in the city. Rock Canyon Park's another one of those. It's just, that's what's going to happen there. The a little bit different configuration on the roads. And then the park itself will actually be about seven hundred and fifty square feet more than what's in the current development agreement. So I'm happy to answer any questions that you have about that.
Well, what was the original acreage on that first park?
It was four point one, or four point oh one, and now it's four point one two acres. So like I said, about seven hundred and fifty square feet plus or minus more. They are being true to the number of trees, the landscaping, the amenities on there. All of that is very similar to what we have in the original agreement. We actually quite frankly pushed back on them when they proposed less and said, you're at least going to need to live up to what you already agreed to in the, in the current development agreement. So it's largely the same, it's just in a different location and it's a different shape.
Since this is a change to what has been accepted up to this point, there's no need that it has to go back to DRC or
It will. So this, this becomes a major change. And because that goes back to planning commission, but because it's not true to the, what they want to do right now is not exactly what's in the development agreement exhibit. They have to do development agreement first. Then it has to go back to preliminary and then it can start going back through final for the individual phases.
So DNC, DRC hasn't looked at it yet?
This is just an exhibit that goes in a development agreement. DRC will look at it for both preliminary and final.
Because looking at the lots, they're long and skinny now, or they're more square before. I'm just wondering if they're going to meet the
Frontage requirements, yeah. They would, all of that will be figured out. This is just a concept. DRC has not reviewed this yet, neither has planning commission. But it will still have to go through our normal, our ten regulations, frontage, lot size, roads, utilities, all that kind of stuff.
Do we have any issues? I know it was brought up in a, I think, budget, two budget meetings ago of it being hard to maintain a lot of small parks throughout town. Is it any difficult? I mean, I know we already have detention. Whatever they're called, parks essentially. Does it make it any more difficult in your opinion?
I don't believe so. It's still going to, so the park that we have now in the, in the current master, not master plan, but development agreement, this is just another location in a different shape. So it just basically already replaces a park that they're already committed to building.
I think the good thing about the question that I had asked earlier, you know, about, you know, I hope this isn't one of those that's going to be ended up lined with rocks and looking like an eyesore as far as I'm concerned, but it's grass, but it also has a whole bunch of equipment that they're
Oh, that they're planning on?
Yeah, a playground.
Is in there, right?
A playground, a pavilion, a drinking fountain, a one or two benches and about fifty some odd trees.
That's their improvements?
That's their cost. Yes, that's their cost. The one, the one thing that they are doing for us that we've requested is they're putting a sewer lateral in there should someday we decide we want a small restroom or something in there. The sewer ladder also has to service the drinking fountain, but it gives us some options if we want to put a restroom in there at some point in the future. That's not planned. It's not budgeted.
But I mean, that's better, it's good to do it that way.
But it gives us the option so we don't have to dig out in the road.
Yeah.
It's good as I look at it for the local mothers maybe more than anything because they don't have to hike up that great big hill to get to the other one, you know. It's all up from down there. And there's no other outlets. It's up.
Do we, do we know if they're going to put any sort of fencing around it? Because it's right up against the railroad now.
There will be fencing. It's shown on the plan. Yep, the backside against the railroad tracks and the two side legs, the two side lot lines will have fencing on it. That's shown on the plan. Pretty sure it's called out there. I can verify that for you, but I'm pretty sure it's there.
That's what your lot?
That's the picture.
Doesn't it say, isn't there a call out for it?
There's a little picture of a bench and there's a little fence behind it, but
There's a call out note for it. Let me, let me go there really quick. I'm pretty sure that there's a
It's a rattlesnake.
That there's a call out for it. So
That's the tracks, isn't it?
That's the track.
Install tan, six foot tan
Oh, I barely read that.
Vinyl fence. So yeah, it does have it in there.
Okay, I could barely read, it gets pixelated when you zoom in.
There's a tall snake with fence.
Okay, six feet.
Okay. Moving on, we will have the budget. I'm going to skip over that in the review of the agenda and we'll come back to that because I think we're going to spend quite a bit of time. We already talked about that. Yeah, we already covered that. Resolution oh five oh four, which is an amendment to the Utah County, with Utah County regarding crime victim services. So this is a victims advocate contract that we have with Utah County. I want to say we're eleven years old on the existing contract, so it's twenty fourteen was the last time that it was inked. So it's time to update the contract. So, actually it might be twenty fifteen or seventeen. Anyway, it's been quite a while since we've revisited this. So happy to answer any questions about that. But those are services that are provided by a by Utah County to help with, for instance, not only, but like domestic violence cases where you have a victim that needs some help with either housing or placement or you know, protective services, those types of things. Those are, that's what's covered in here.
It's a service they provide, but we also get billed for part of that too.
We do. We get billed a significant amount. In fact, this, this increases us from about fifteen thousand a year to thirty-three thousand a year. But we're, I don't want to say we're stuck, but we're stuck because it's really our only option. We don't, we don't have enough manpower or the expertise to provide our own victims advocate services. And the state legislature mandates that we provide this. So we're kind of stuck between a rock and a hard place with Utah County and kind of have to accept what they put out. We, we did try to get some concessions and they basically said no.
What was the reasoning behind the four percent increase every year?
So the, the reality of it is, is I don't think it's been increased for close to a decade. And so they've gotten behind. This is not a whole lot different than a property tax or some type of a fee that you don't update. And then all of a sudden, you have a great big huge update to it. That's
Okay.
That, that's really in a nutshell what this is, is they haven't done it for a long time and now it's hitting us hard.
So I'm like, that's just the law every year.
Well, I think what it is, is they didn't do it through the years, but they can't make up.
Right.
And this is where their operation level is. So
Yeah, Chief Hurst told me he proposed like a CPI increase every year a few years ago and they rejected it. And now they came up with this.
Yeah.
So
He meaning Rod. Rod indicated that, that we've been asking for this for years and they never did anything and now we're just getting a huge increase.
Yeah. Well, I was trying to prepare for it and they they chose this option.
Yeah. Any other questions or concerns on that? Okay. Ordinances, Jason, you want to take these four away?
Yeah. The the first three are pretty much trying to stay in line with some recent state legislation. The first one, affordable housing in the PUD. That's us addressing our PUD code to implement a strategy that we have. Basically providing an incentive for if they incorporate moderate income housing into a PUD, there can be a little bit more incentive for them. Amendment to
You need to get closer to your microphone. They can't hear you. Or get your microphone closer to you.
Amendment to remove flow charts in modified site plan process language. And this is, we've noticed in our code that the flow charts can sometimes be a little open for interpretation with the language that we have. So we propose to get rid of that. We can still use those flow charts as a tool, but to have it in our code makes it a little bit more binding and if there's ambiguity there, then it, then it can be confusing. But really, this is more about modifying the site plan process and and making sure that it's, it's in line with, with state legislation. Lot line adjustments modifications, again, that's, this is kind of flip flopped over the years where, where the city's been involved in, in any sort of lot line adjustment. But then, then most recently, the city was not involved. We were kind of encouraging people to involve us so that they they didn't do something that would get them sideways with our zoning code. So I think that's probably a major reason why this is now going back to having cities involvement in review of the, in reviewing those lot line adjustment modifications. And then the last one is, is multifamily dumpsters code amendment. This is something we've recently been dealing with. I know that public safety and our utility department has asked for this to be considered. This is essentially trying to align our dumpster requirements to be with, with what we require for master meters. So a development can have a master meter where, where the city's utility enter that master meter and then beyond that master meter, then it's up to the individual developer or their HOA or whatever to to monitor how those, the water usage and payment of those utilities from that master meter. We've had situations lately where we've had developers want to use individual cans for very dense developments, you know, several hundred cans. We want to put this in line with how we do master meters and that is if there's three or more units in a development, they need to have a dumpster. And they don't have the option to do individual cans. Our code right now has been a little bit ambiguous that way where, where some people like the option of going individual cans. But like I say, for utility department, it's, it's difficult when you know, people would only need to set it, set up a utility count just for a garbage can when they have no other utilities that they're setting up with the city. For public safety, on garbage day, when you've got hundreds of cans out in the street, it can sometimes cause cause issues with width and just cans all over the place in the way. So this is something to to provide some clarification on the cities.
Does this affect, so is this just like condominiums? Is this duplexes, townhomes?
All the above. Anything that's three units or more is what this would apply to.
Should it apply to HOA?
But, but it only applies to new. It's not going to be retroactive to some of those ones that are smaller or that are already existing. I mean, they're this only applies to new that don't have current development rights or development agreement or are already built. It's not retroactive.
If someone wants to convert their house to a triplex.
They would have to have a dumpster now.
Right, right. And to answer your question, Councilmember Meekum, yeah. I mean, even with cans, the HOA can do two cans, but this would, you know, our garbage service doesn't necessarily pick up dumpsters. So yeah, their HOA would be responsible for for getting dumpsters for these private developments.
So they couldn't do
Cans.
Cans as an HOA, because there's some, like you said, there are some doing that now.
Correct.
And they're doing, they're not even using Santaquin City for their garbage. They're doing their own thing. This still requires them to do a dumpster.
That is correct.
Correct.
Again, because we've had these two developments that this is affecting. And can you imagine, there's one development, four hundred and twenty-nine units, that has four hundred and twenty-nine cans or more. It's double that much if they have recycle and then it could be more than that if they have two cans for one of those recyclers. So this is hundreds and hundreds of cans on the road that have to be picked up by our service or somebody else's service. And it just clogs up parking and makes it so that it's hard to snowplow and fill in the blank, right?
Right. How do we bill for that? Right now, we bill by
We bill the HOA. We bill the HOA.
But, yeah, but aren't we, isn't the cost we have the fee structure to just the trash can?
It is the trash can.
How do we do it by dumpster? Oh, we have a dumpster?
We will not be doing dumpsters. If they, this, this would require them to have a third party to do the dumpsters. This is not
Oh, so the city's not even involved.
City serviced.
Right. Like I say, our garbage service
So that's like an HOA service?
Yes.
Correct. The HOA would be required to do it. And before, when they wanted the city to do it with individual cans, they had to come set up a utility account just to get a garbage can, which, which means just a lot of work of setting up all these utility accounts for nothing but a garbage can. So this, this puts it into the HOA's hands to provide a dumpster. And like I say, the city garbage services doesn't pick up dumpsters for residential.
They'll probably still use what, Republic Services, but
They could.
They're going there.
It's up to them.
Okay, that's good.
There's some language in there about an enclosure too, right? So they can't just have a dumpster out in the
We already have that.
That's correct. That's, it's just clarifying that it has to meet our code that already requires that. Yep.
Right.
So good, good discussion. Thank you. Anything else on those?
Let's go through these other pieces and try to get back to the
So, resolution oh five oh one, twenty twenty-five CDA is just the renewal agency, community renewal agency tentative budget. Oh, five oh two CDA is the ratification of amendment for precision mill works. Purchase agreement, the only thing that's in there is just extending the closing deadline by fifty days. Remember that they're going through an SBA process and that just takes more time. Then we also have tentative budgets for both the LBA, the Local Building Authority, and the Special Service District. Now getting back to the budget, I want to get to my notes. Shannon's here to take all the hard questions. I'm here to take all the easy ones. So, let me just start out by saying this is what the budget is based on. And there's probably going to be questions as we go along. I'd ask you to kind of hold your questions because I think we're going to cover most of it. But we're happy to come back to questions if we have them, okay? First of all, the budget is based on
Wait a minute, I think that we do want to state that every item that's been brought up, everything that was voiced in the last couple of weeks, we've jumped upon.
We've tried to address
I think this is very, very positive. So, is it perfect? Probably not, but neither am I.
Neither am I. Okay, so the budget Neither am I. Okay, so the budget, the budget is based on a two and a half percent anticipated growth. Now, what that means is the end of next year, we're going to likely have two point five percent more homes to service with water and sewer and roads to plow and garbages to pick up and all of those types of things. So there is a moderate amount of growth in there accounted for in the budget, right? We're going to have building permits. We're going to have those homes are going to turn over and are going to turn into revenue for and expenses for those new homes. Okay? We have been able to to use the most up to date revenue projections. There is currently contemplated. I I sent out the list of the items that are included in there. The two things that have been added completely added from the last time that we looked at this was the pickup truck for the fire department at sixty thousand dollars instead of seventy five. There's some concessions made there, meaning we don't need to outfit it with fancy stuff right now. We could deal with those things at a later point in time. And also the addition of the the fire full time fire position to help out. So those two things have been added in there. In contemplation of that, the budget is currently based off of a property tax increase of a hundred and thirty six thousand dollars. Half of that covering for the for the police officer that would be added, half of that covering for this other full time up position in the fire department. Okay? The the budget is also based on a four point six percent cost of cost of living or COLA. That includes both utilities and wages, so utilities on the revenue side, wages on the on the expenditure side. I wanted to make sure that.
Say?
Four point six percent. I wanted to also help you understand that that our COLA history, I think I've explained it to, I've tried to, but just in short, two years ago, at the end of twenty twenty two, two and a half years ago almost, the inflation rate was eight percent that that calendar year. We reacted with only a four percent COLA increase because it was such a tight year from fiscal year twenty two, twenty three was such a tight year. When we wrote down the budget, one point six million dollars because building permits were not coming in. We we reacted with only a four percent COLA increase. So we were behind four percent of just a a normal COLA, and that was both on utilities, revenue side, and on the expenditure wages side of things. Okay? Over the last two years, we've tried to make some of that up, but we haven't made it all up yet. Right? Right now, what's contemplated is picking up what the remainder of that was. Two point nine percent for calendar year from of twenty twenty four plus the first three months of this year, so up to March, which is the best information that we have. We don't even have any kind of C P I U or anything for April yet, because it's so new. It won't come out for another couple of weeks. So that's the that's the reason for the the COLA. That's a little bit more than the two point nine percent that was the C P I U inflation all of last year. Is because we're still trying to play catch up. We're still trying to get our employees back up to where we have some type of again, catch up or or bringing them back to some level of catching up with that inflation. Okay? There is also based on the budget is also based on up to a one point five percent merit increase. So this year, for comparison, we're at four percent and one percent. This would take us to four four point six percent and one point five. So instead of five percent, this, which is this fiscal year that we're in, up to five percent, this fiscal year would be would include a six point one total between COLA and merit. Now, in in the interim, I've done quite a bit of work. Shannon and I actually have done quite a bit of work with talking to other cities and finding out what they're doing. So I want to give you some comparisons for cities that are much bigger, much smaller, same size, so that you can kind of get an idea of what's happening out there in the market. Because every city has public works people, every city has police officers, every city has firefighters, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So just as as a quick smattering, Springville is at six percent COLA plus merit. Mox Elder County, six percent, but twelve percent on public safety.
Do you want to share this on on the screen?
It's not in a format that I can do that, but I can if you want me to. We can include it in the we can include it in the notes in the minutes for the meeting. La Verkan, which is much smaller than we are, six percent COLA. Brigham City, six percent COLA. Central Davis Sewer District, six point eight percent COLA and merit, plus an additional one percent possible merit. Clearfield City, eight percent. Heber City, six point three. Ivan City, six. Perry City, seven point one. Provo, six point five. Riverton, seven percent. Salt Lake, ten percent. COLA and merit, although fifteen percent in some cases on public safety positions. Utah County is the same, fifteen percent with with the public safety. Smithfield, seven percent. Sniderville Basin Water District, six point point five percent. Syracuse City, five point eight. Weber Fire, nine percent. Provo City, six point. Oh, I already had that one, six point five. Highland City, five point nine. Nibley, six percent. Beaver, six percent. With that, also, some of those bigger ones like Provo, Salt Lake, Central Davis Sewer District are actually starting their COLAs on July first. Right now, our COLA doesn't kick in until October first, so we missed that first three month quarter compared to some of the other cities that are out there. I don't have detailed data on all those ones that I've read on when they're starting. Some of them just had notes off to the side of when they're starting, and it was July first. Now, going back, so so that's the basis of the the budget. Let me go back and tell you what we have changed, added, corrected, updated from the time that we met two weeks ago tomorrow night. Okay, we had a budget planning session two weeks ago on Wednesday night. We have reduced the H R admin assistant that also had a passport agent component to it. The request was for twenty nine hours, and we brought it back to twenty two hours. Remember that it's not just a passport. I think folks were focused on that passport. This is an H R administration have made administrative assistant position to help us out where we're overloaded between H R and and administrative assistant upstairs for helping us and and Jason and the mayor and Emily to take off some of the load. Also, healthcare costs. We were finally able to get healthcare costs in. The budget that you saw two weeks ago had a fifteen percent anticipation. We were able to negotiate that down to twelve percent. That's roughly a thirty thousand dollar difference from what we were talking about just two weeks ago to today, because we have actuals. We have actual numbers from them. I think the dental was even a little bit less than that, but on average, it's about a twelve percent increase in in healthcare costs overall. We have also reduced. Sorry, we're proposing to reduce the employer annual contribution to H S A. Right now, we have two plans available to in in healthcare. We have a traditional plan, which most of us know what that is. And then we have an H S A plan, which most of us know what that is. In the H S A plan, it's typically higher deductibles, higher upfront out of pocket costs, et cetera, but it costs us less. And so in order to have some type of I don't want to call it parity, but a little bit of of equalization of what a family might be getting versus another family. If somebody takes their traditional plan, there's no contribution to an F S A. If somebody takes the high the the high deductible plan, there is a contribution to the H S A, and that's going down five hundred dollars this year, just because the difference between those two costs is shrinking, which is not unusual. We found that over the years.
Can I ask? I I forget. Is this, is it a per employee? Is it based on dependent status? Or it's just it's just any employee gets that same amount regardless of dependents or?
It is. That's correct. That's correct, because because if it's a single individual, it's the same.
Cheaper, probably.
It's cheaper, but but the H S A is also cheaper as well. So yes, the answer is it's it's either single or for family, but I think most of them are family.
If the same contributions are based on if it's a family or a group, it's the same. If it's a single, it's.
Oh, okay. Okay, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, that's what I thought.
Okay.
Yeah.
We have also moving on from there. So we reduced that by five hundred dollars just because the the difference between those two plans is now shrinking a little bit.
Is that? So that's five hundred a year?
What's that? No, so what what it is is it will it will it will come to where we will put twenty five. If it's a family, we'll put twenty five hundred dollars in for the whole year.
Yep.
And then and so that's what, two hundred dollars, a little more than two hundred dollars a month difference in cost between the H S A and the traditional plan. And if they want to put another five hundred dollars in, then we will add another five hundred dollars. So they could get potentially have thirty five hundred dollars in their H S A, but only twenty five hundred dollars if they don't contribute some to themselves.
Okay, so now you're we're matching a portion instead.
We're matching the last five hundred dollars. That is correct, which is what we did last year. But the overall, this fiscal year that we're in right now is four thousand dollars total. This one will become three thirty five hundred. That's the five hundred dollars that we're talking.
Okay, oh, all right. And then what about if if you're single?
Then half that much.
Half of it.
So it's just two fifty?
Yeah, yeah, exactly. Okay, thank you for your good discussion on that. Any more questions on that? Okay? We reallocated some positions in the Public Works Department. So for whatever reason, for the last couple of years, we've had some folks that have been in parks that maybe were more dedicated to water and vice versa. So we've now taken a look at and and allocated funds according to where they spend most of their time. And what that's done is that's put a little bit more burden on the water sewer and P I, because those are enterprise funds, and taken a little bit of pressure off of the general fund, which is where parks and streets are at. Does that make sense? So we've we've just we've just reallocated some of the 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 costs of labor in the areas where the folks are spending the the most of their time. Okay, that's helped us in the general fund a little bit.
How much it was shifted total just from that change?
There's dozens of line items. There's no way. I mean, it's just we we because it's fifteen percent here, it's now five percent here. And so trying to put a dollar amount to that is gonna, I mean, it would be hours to try and just figure out that dollar amount.
If you had a general idea, if you went to like the street budget, the most that it would be, it's like it has a negative provision amount for this year, you could get a general idea, but like a parks or cemetery, it's going to be a true number because we've added positions there.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Right. The new positions are going to skew that.
Okay.
Yeah. We've also created, because we have because we have streets and storm grain, and we have a storm grain enterprise fund, we've also now started to allocate where there's enough revenue coming in from there, portions of those same street workers that will go to storm grain fund, because that's part of the streets, right? They go out and they sweep streets, they clean storm drains, all that kind of stuff. That's pretty minimal. I want to see that's fifty fifty thousand dollars or something like that.
Oh, that one we wanted to replace. Yeah.
We have also, as I indicated, we reduced the request for the fire truck from seventy five thousand to sixty thousand. We did not just whack that off the top. We we worked with Chief Lind on that, and and the sixty thousand dollars is what we can live with at this point to get the vehicle that we need. We may need to buy some equipment for it later on, but it's not going to have any fancy stuff on it. It's just going to be an F two fifty that will have the towing capacity that he needs.
Just just to note on this, this was not just it went in and cut that down. This is all input and a series of meetings and input from Ryan and from his people, and it's mutually agreed upon, and we tried to come up with ways that we could cover all of these things, and they would be a part of it as well.
Ryan, Ryan actually even looked at used vehicles, and to get a used vehicle that's in any kind of decent shape, you're going to pay within a few thousand dollars of what new is. So and there would be no warranty. So we we just opted to stay here, and we feel like that Ryan feels like, and we feel like that that's the best way to go. We also, again, put the full time fire position, wages in there and benefits. And also, we reduced, again, working with Ryan, understanding the need for the full time. He was he was able to go in and look at a few of his operational costs and reduced operational costs in the fire department by about eight thousand dollars. That's not sending as many people to conferences that he wants to train, et cetera, but that it's something that that he can live with and something that he worked with Shannon on to be able to get where we need to be with to balance a budget.
That that was to to help go towards the battalion chief.
Yes, that's correct. The full time position. That's correct.
And and we've changed that battalion chief to captain level.
Well, we're thinking about that. We're still comparing it to other agencies out there, but a battalion chief is wouldn't likely fit in with the range that we have budgeted.
Okay.
But we have been again.
That would work for both.
Try and make sure that the money that's paid for that person is equitable.
He can have fire marshal positions.
Yeah. Good, good question. Why don't you ask that question, Travis?
I was just wondering, I Payson has a fire marshal that has different duties that would probably relieve a lot of what Ryan Lind does.
That is absolutely correct.
Enforcement authority with it. Are we going to do something like that?
He actually brought up the option of a fire marshal too, so I think it's just, you know, when we get to that point.
We're going to make.
Get his needs and then we'll decide about that.
I I really think that fire marshal is going to fit under this captain or whatever we put in there. That's the discussion that we've had. So going to D R C and taking care of meetings like that.
Type stuff.
Yeah, so so I I think it's going to be a plethora of different options or different areas that he can offload some of the workload that he has to be able to help him. That's going to be up to Ryan. We're just looking at budget right now, and he'll come up with what he needs to come up with. But fire marshal is one of the specific items that that this person has been talked about taking over.
Okay.
Yeah, we talked about that yesterday, so.
That could be everything from fire for code enforcement for weeds to attending D R C and looking at new plans and evaluating those. That there's all kinds of different things.
Things like that.
Yeah, yeah. Again, all of this has been undone in concert with Ryan to make sure that we're doing all that we can to meet his needs. We're we're looking at budget right now. Shannon has looked at at positions and how that budget might fit, and we have some options there to be able to help relieve some of the pressure off of Ryan.
My only concern was if this is a guy that's just going to sit at the fire department to fill a full time spot, that doesn't help us much. But if he has responsibilities to lessen his workload, that's.
So so what I discussed with Ryan, again, it's not set in stone, but what Ryan and I have discussed is that this position would be eight hours a day, five days a week. So they would be their work hours, basically, seven A M. to whenever or eight A M. to whenever. And they would be there Monday through Friday, other than vacation and other things like that. But yes, this that's the whole purpose of this is to have somebody there that could both cover at the station, but also can do a whole bunch of other duties when they're not on out on. So in other words, the number of part time positions is not going down to make up for this. This would just be another leadership position that can help with scheduling, that can help with fire marshal, can help with all of those things that would happen to be in the fire department at the same time. It's not necessarily for fire or E M S coverage, although they could be that as well.
But but this person would be able, hopefully, right to act as an interim chief if something were to happen.
Yeah.
So so yeah.
That.
So the continuity wise.
So that's accurate, but that's that will be part of a job description that has yet to be put together. Again, we're getting way down into the weeds of how Ryan's going to be able to run his department. What we're looking at right now is budget, and the mayor and I and Shannon will continue to work with Ryan on how that's best going to fit for this position.
I I just mean, you know, my thinking behind that budget item was that there's only one full time person there, and if that full time person leaves, there's no continuity for that department.
That is correct, for training and and everything else.
That's that. I mean, that's my big concern is is if we add full time, that should be like a a requirement of this position is that that position has to be able to support the continuity of the fire department.
Absolutely.
I I think we'll see a specification of what those requirements will be for that individual, and it'll probably come before us, but not not necessarily.
It will not.
Something we can ask for.
Yep.
But.
It will not come before the council, because you guys don't don't approve or disapprove or deny job descriptions. That's something that we work on as your professional staff. And again, we'll work with Ryan on this and make sure that we've got all the needs covered that we can cover with the budget that we have.
I'm just saying, I don't want to approve a budget item as a blank check. Do you get what I mean? That's what I'm saying. I know that it's something that staff's going to work out, but I'm saying if council's advising, we want that this needs to be supporting continuity of the fire department, then that role, that budget item should be used to fulfill that need.
Which is absolutely accurate. That's exactly what we're talking about. In fact, I think Ryan's talked about that in his presentation a few months ago at the budget retreat, and then two weeks ago, that just just having that supervision and that training and et cetera during the during the time that he may not be able to be in the office. I would just be really cautious to say interim chief, because when you start talking about an interim chief or an assistant chief or battalion chief, the wages go way up. So again, we're trying to cover, and it will cover as much as it can, but it's not an unlimited budget, and it's not a blank check. It will go for a position that will help to alleviate all of the the stresses that it can off of Ryan's time.
And and more than anything, it's something that H R will be able to validate for what amount that we're paying. It may not be a hundred and thirty thousand. It may be less.
Yeah, it could be a hundred and twenty, but right now, we're trying to get to to just approve a budget, knowing that we need a full time position, and that's the direction that we're going. It won't be spread among other areas or other staff or whatever. It's going to be for this position to accomplish as much as we can in the fire department. Again, the last two things that I would cover is that three things, this does include a hundred and thirty six thousand dollars in a a property tax for half of a police officer and half of a fire fire captain is what we're calling it, but that full time fire position. Shannon has also been able to go through and revise a little bit. It's not a lot, but a little bit in general fund revenue after we evaluated, because we got another month under our belt that we didn't have the last two times that we met. Right? We we based it off of what you saw two weeks ago was based off of the end of March. These projections are now based off of the end of April, because we were able to close it out last Thursday and then have this in the packet for you. And then the last thing is just a miscellaneous small adjustments here and there. Again, too too numerous to to enumerate, but that's how we've been able to get to a balanced budget.
Are are we moving over the funds? Are are we moving over the funds, the a hundred something thousand that we didn't spend this year to close that budget?
So that we are, there is no call for uh revenue coming from uh fund balance. So whatever we may have left over will roll into fund balance.
Cause that that was that was an option that was.
It was, correct.
Okay, but with.
Correct. Currently, that is not that that we are not based off of the the budget is not based off of pulling anything from reserve funds. Rainy day fund, fund balance, whatever you want to call it, fund balance is the technical term for it.
And and so we'll put in the three hundred and thirty that we had passed last fall and it'll all stay there.
For from the park impact fees to to go back into it. This will be our second year of doing that. That's correct.
But that's good because if there is a a need to use that.
Sure.
That's now one, it's it's extra.
We're replenishing it, yep.
Yep.
Okay. Um, yes, I I'll let the mayor, do you want to give Art some time?
Yeah.
I just have a question about the hundred and thirty six. I know you break this down per household. Um, what's that figure look like?
So so right now, the best information that we have is that that would be about a seven point nine percent property tax increase on the median home. Which if I remember right, the medium home two years ago when we did a property tax increase is about four forty, four hundred and forty thousand dollars. And that equates to about two dollars and seventeen cents a month. Now, I will caution you about using those numbers publicly. Just because they're not going to be accurate. We will not know what that actual number is until about the first or second week in June. When we get the the valuation, the home valuations and therefore the property tax that the county is saying. Then we would just add the one thirty to that. So it may be a little bit more. I I would anticipate it's probably a little bit less, but I I'm just going off of the best. Uh estimate that I have based off of what we did, what we picked up this year, what we brought in, what we did two years ago and the amount that's needed. That's the same exact thing that we did last year, if I remember. Two years ago, I want to say that we estimated it was about fifty four percent increase and ended up being fifty and a half. So we ended up, we we estimated it would be under ten dollars a month. It was nine dollars and fifty one cents a month. Two years ago when we did the property tax for that median price home.
Just an ballpark figure, we're talking about definitely less than fifty dollars a year.
Half that.
Yeah.
Yeah, if you're two seventeen, on on again, on an average home, you have to be really cautious because there's homes that are above that and there's homes that are below that.
Just some sort of parameter guideline, so twenty five, thirty dollars a year.
Yes.
Ish.
Ish. Hopefully less than that.
Somewhere in there and and we kind of figured that we were going to be right in that neighborhood all along, so. You know, the one good thing is we've accomplished what had been asked for and a little bit beyond of where everything had been rated. Three month rated three months ago and you know, I I love the input because it's driven it to. Clearing up quite a few questions and uh sharpening the pencil all the way through. I I think all the directors are pretty happy right now or will be.
I I've not heard any disgruntled directors right now and we we presented this or at least had a discussion. On Monday in our directors meeting about the budget that's been presented to you. And and yes, I would go with the mayor as in my email. This has been very helpful for us. It's been it's been eye opening to me and helpful for us to to understand what your concerns are, maybe that we weren't focused enough.
I spent all day yesterday with Ryan. You know, it was a little bit of fun involved, but it was all day long and we discussed every need and went over all kinds of things.
Didn't involve a little white ball?
Yes, it did.
They were orange.
Uh, he donated an awful lot of them to the water and other things.
No.
Yeah. So remind him of that.
Yeah, I'm happy to provide any answers or if you have questions. Shannon is here as well and I just again. Huge kudos to her because she spent hours and hours and hours. Remember, there's twenty three hundred lines and. Six columns that she has to fill in every cell in there every year.
I I want I want to thank Shannon um and Norm. Uh, I reached out to you both last week, I think last Monday, and you took the time. I was late to the own meeting that I scheduled, but. Um, uh, I just got into the location where I was taking the call, but I really appreciate that. I think even from beyond what we talked about. There's a lot of uh improvements that were made. I still obviously have my hesitancy around vehicle costs. And I s- I think that's more of like an operational thing of each each director being able to determine what's the. The the basic needs or requirements for their vehicles for their departments. And what are some conveniences or wants? Um, but overall, I think there's a lot of good improvements um. To this. I I do have a question around, I know this is getting outside of the budget. Um, I think last time there was a property tax increase, there was what? Was it forty thousand? Or there was a certain amount that we paid for the work to get that done. Are we estimating any costs or now that we have that under our belt, we're just going to leverage everything from before?
It was thirty thousand.
Yeah.
We haven't employed them.
Oh, good, good.
Yeah.
Cause I I don't want to.
I don't think we need it this year.
Yeah.
You done?
Yeah.
I also want to second what Brian said about Shannon and Norm. Um, out of their busy schedule, they took time to meet with me individually and. Help me understand some things that I didn't. I appreciate their time and effort in doing that. Thank you.
Good. Anything else?
I don't have anything else. I think we've covered everything on there unless Shannon, do you have anything to add that we haven't talked about? Again, happy to answer any questions that you have, Mayor.
You know, this can be a really long, long meeting tonight. Or it could be really short, you know, but uh.
Do we have any plans for meetings after or no?
Are we having, oh.
No, no closed sessions that I'm aware of.
Thank you because I I did not want that.
We can't fit something in there.
Travis really wants one, Mayor.
Oh, you would? I think Lynn really likes those closed meetings.
Yeah.
Think anybody really?
No, things, things go on with all the regular things. We've had those meetings for no new news at this point.
Lynn has an appointment at nine forty five, so.
Let's hurry up.
You know, some people call that beauty sleep, but I don't know that it's possible. Okay, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Seconded.
And seconded. Okay, Brian.
Aye.
Art.
Aye.
Jeff.
Aye.
Lynn.
Aye.
Travis.
Aye.
We're done.